Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the San Francisco Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September 19th, 2017. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. President Breed, here. Breed, present. Supervisor Cohen. Cohen not present. Supervisor Farrell. Farrell absent. Supervisor Fewer.
[coughs]
Fewer not present. Supervisor Kim?
Fewer's here.
Oh, sorry. Apologies. Fewer present.
Lost her voice again.
Supervisor Kim? Kim, present. Supervisor Peskin?
Present.
Peskin, present. Supervisor Ronan?
Ronan, present.
Supervisor Safaei? Not present. Supervisor Sheehy?
Present.
Sheehy, present. Supervisor Tang? Tang not present. Supervisor Yi?
Present.
Yi, present. Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
Yes, Madam President. Dated September 14th, I have three letters from Supervisors Farrell, Tang, and Safaei requesting to be excused from the votes from the board meeting today.
Okay. And also Supervisor Cohen has asked to be excused until she arrives closer to 2:45 PM as well. Colleagues, is there a motion to excuse our colleagues? Moved by Supervisor Peskin, seconded by Supervisor Sheehy. Can we take that without objection? Without objection, our colleagues are excused. Madam Clerk, let's read the consent agenda.
Items 1 through 4 comprise the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine if a member objects, and item may be severed and considered separately.
Roll call vote.
On items 1 through 4, Supervisor Kim?
Aye.
Kim, aye. Supervisor Peskin?
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Ronan?
Aye.
Ronan, aye. Supervisor Sheehy?
Aye.
Sheehy, aye. Supervisor Yi?
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Breed?
Aye.
Breed, aye. Supervisor Cohen. Cohen excused. And Supervisor Fewer?
Aye.
Fewer, aye. There are seven ayes.
Those ordinances are finally passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, let's go to item number five.
Item five is an ordinance to amend the planning code to revise the amount of the inclusionary affordable housing fee and the onsite and offsite affordable housing alternatives and other requirements to require minimum dwelling unit mix in most residential districts and to affirm the sequoia determination and make the appropriate findings.
Supervisor Kim?
Thank you, President Breed. I know that this is the legislation that keeps going, but I do have to ask for a motion to continue this item for another week during that time that we were trying to draft the amendment that I had stated at last week's board meeting. The city attorney's office, along with planning, noticed another conflict in our language around 415, and we do have to fix that, and that is not ready for today. So I will make a motion to continue for one more week.
Supervisor Kim has made a motion to continue this item one week to the meeting of September 26, 2017. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Ronan. Colleagues, can we take that without objection? Without objection, this item will be continued to next week. Madam Clerk, let's go to item number six.
Item six is an ordinance to levy property taxes at a combined rate of $1.1723 on each 100 valuation of taxable property for the city, San Francisco Unified School District, San Francisco Community College District, the Bay Area Rapid Transit District, and the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and to establish a pass-through rate of $0.0890 pursuant per 100 of assessed value for residential tenants pursuant to Administrative Code, Chapter 37, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
Colleagues, can we take this item? Same house, same call? Without objection, the ordinance passes unanimously on the first reading. Next item.
Item seven is a resolution to retroactively authorize the Department of Public Health to accept and expand a grant in the amount of approximately $225,000 from the Public Health Foundation Enterprises to participate in a ZICA response resource grant program March 1, 2017, through July 31, 2018.
Same house, same call? Without objection, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Item eight, please.
Item eight is a resolution to approve a professional services contract for relocation services between Treasure Island Development Authority and Associated Right-of-Way Services, Inc., for a five-year term through June 30, 2022, and two two-year options to extend for a not-to-exceed amount of $1.25 million over the initial five-year term.
Same house, same call? Without objection, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Item number nine, please.
Item nine, resolution to retroactively approve the grant between the city and low-income investment fund for the purpose of administering the San Francisco Child Care Facilities Fund and providing technical assistance from July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020, in the amount of approximately $25 million.
Same house, same call? Without objection, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Item 10, please.
Item 10 is a resolution to authorize and approve the lease for a portion of the equipment room at Zuckerberg San Francisco General Hospital and Trauma Center with T-Mobile West LLC, at the monthly base rent of $5,000 to be waived while participating in the distributed antenna system and providing enhanced cellular services to the city, UCSF staff, the hospital, patients, and visitors within Building 25 for a five-year term.
Same house, same call? Without objection, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Item 11, please.
Item 11 is a resolution to approve and authorize the executive director of the Port of San Francisco to execute a professional services agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers, Inc., for planning, engineering, and environmental services for the Seawall Resiliency Project for an amount not to exceed approximately $40 million and a 10-year term through October 1, 2027.
Same house, same call? Without objection, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Item number 12.
Item 12 is a resolution to authorize the Department of Homelessness and Support of Housing to apply for a technical assistance grant in an amount up to $150,000 from the California Department of Housing and Community Development to support the planning and implementation of No Place Like Home.
Same house, same call? Without objection, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, please call items 13 through 15 together.
Items 13 through 15 are three resolutions that declare the intent of the city to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of future bonded indebtedness, authorizes the director of the mayor's office of housing and community development to submit an application and related documents to the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee. Item 13 permits the issuance of residential mortgage revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed $95 million for 1950 Mission Street. Item 14 authorizes an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $65 million for 490 South Van Ness Avenue. And item 15 permits the issuance of residential mortgage revenue bonds in a not-to-exceed amount of $50 million for 1294 and 1296 Shotwell Street.
Same house, same call? Without objection, the resolutions are adopted unanimously. Item number 16.
Item 16 is an ordinance to amend the planning code to support the legacy businesses, expand the definition of historic buildings, and impose additional requirements in the Broadway Neighborhood Commercial Districts and the North Beach Special Use Districts, where certain uses will be prohibited, lot sizes reduced, modified, and in the Telegraph-Hill-North Beach Residential SUD, the North Beach NCD, and the Chinatown Mixed Use Districts to reduce off-street parking, to affirm the planning department's determination under the SEQA California Environmental Quality Act, and make the appropriate findings.
Supervisor Peskin.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I also want to thank Land Use Committee Chair Farrell and the other member of that committee Supervisor Tang for unanimously forwarding this to the full board with recommendation. This is one of a series of legislative efforts that have happened over time dating back to 1986 to preserve and enhance the fine-scale commercial character in the northeast corner of the city in a number of destination-beloved neighborhoods, North Beach and Chinatown. There will be a trailing piece of legislation for the Polk Street corridor, and the primary goal is to continue to encourage active commercial uses at the ground floor. I want to thank the North Beach Business Association, as well as the Small Business Commission, which recommended this legislation unanimously, a number of neighborhood organizations, including the Telegraph-Hill dwellers, livable cities for their support, particularly given the restrictions on off-street parking and new development, as well as the planning staff for their analysis and recommendations, and working with my staff, Lee Hetner, for the past several months on this legislation. There are a number of small technical amendments that I have passed out to each and every one of you and the clerk. They are very small. Page 5 at line 5, to add the word "residential" to reflect the full title of the Residential Special Use District. On page 10 at line 6, to delete the word "commission" and replace it with the word "city" on page 10 at line 11, to add the words "eliminate or." And then, insofar as in committee, there was, we heard from some members of the public about some formula retail controls. We severed that out and kept that into committee, where we can have a broader conversation that will involve folks, particularly from the health services, that had concerns about that language. So to reflect that, on page 13, add Section 3, which reflects that when this file was at committee, we duplicated, removed from the file, the amendments for formula retail. And finally, to the same end, on page 1 at line 11, in the long title of the legislation, we're deleting the reference to "formula retail." So I would like to make a motion to make those technical amendments and commend this legislation to you, and once again, thank everybody involved for getting it to the board.
Thank you, Supervisor Peskin, and thank you for using the new guidelines and highlighting the amendments for easy-to-follow-through amendments. All right. Supervisor Peskin has made a motion to amend. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Fewer. Colleagues, can we take the amendments without objection? Without objection, the amendments pass unanimously. And on the item as amended, can we take that same house, same call? Without objection, this ordinance is passed as amended unanimously on the first reading. Item number 17.
Item 17 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11D of the building code to extend the time for compliance with the requirement that an existing building with a place of public accommodation either have all primary entries and path of travel into the building accessible by persons with disabilities, or receive from the city a determination of equivalent facilitation, technical, and feasibility, or unreasonable hardship.
Colleagues, can we take this item? Same house, same call? Without objection, the ordinance passes unanimously on the first reading. Next item, please.
Item 18 is a resolution to urge the Recreation and Parks Commission to remove the name of Justin Herman from the Plaza located at the intersection of the Embarcadero and Market Street.
Supervisor Peskin.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I want to thank each and every one of you for being cosponsors of this resolution that is a long time in coming, a half a century in coming, which I think is more about a misguided series of policies than the individual named herein. As we discussed in committee, this was not just about Justin Herman. This was about a national misguided policy that we commonly refer to then and now as urban renewal, which resulted in the decimation of communities here in San Francisco and in urban America. And it was not done by any one person. It happened under three mayors. I read in committee the name of every board president that presided during that period of time. Mr. Herman, of course, was the head of the redevelopment agency from 1959 till 1971. But his name has come to symbolize the displacement of over 4,000 people from the Fillmore, the destruction of 60 square blocks of what was a vibrant, robust community that we have been trying to knit back together for decades since. But this is not about demonizing that individual, who by all accounts was a very complicated person. In committee, I actually read quotes and writings by the late, great editor of The Sun reporter, Thomas Fleming, who early on had very tough words for Mr. Herman relative to, quote, "being the arch-villain in the black depopulation of the city." But as a noted journalist, Mr. Fleming wrote later in The Sun reporter, some three years later, his view of Mr. Herman and redevelopment evolved. His methods changed from working against communities to working with communities. For instance, in the development of Diamond Heights, Mr. Herman insisted on a mix of housing types and the inclusion of Section 8 housing. This probably remains one of our highest concentrations of Section 8 housing in the city even today. But I think it is time to acknowledge this chapter publicly. I remember when a former member of this body, some 17 years ago, introduced a similar resolution, and it went nowhere, and I think it speaks volumes that today, all 11 of us are cosponsors of this matter. And I look forward to a robust conversation about what worthy individual who reflects San Francisco values should replace that, and that will happen at the Wreck-And-Part Commission. We've heard public comment about it here, but I think doing it in two steps. One, acknowledging that dark chapter in San Francisco history, and then, two, moving forward with the next chapter should be two separate actions by the city. I want to thank the Recreation and Parks Department and its commission that will be taking this matter up at their October meeting, and, colleagues, I again thank you for your support.
Thank you, Supervisor Peskin. Supervisor Kim?
I just want to thank Supervisor Peskin for taking this on and concur with the words that he shared today. I think I first noted the irony of the Plaza being named after Justin Plaza, Justin Herman, when Occupy San Francisco decided to make that their location site. And given that this is the man that once most famously said that this land is too valuable to let poor people park on it, it seems very appropriate for us to embark on this process of removing his name. And I should add, as Supervisor Peskin stated, that a quote never equals the sum of an individual, and there's certainly a lot more to Justin Herman than that statement and the actions that he made as the director of Redevelopment Agency here in San Francisco. But I do think, given the values of the city and certainly the fight that we are waging to keep a diverse community in San Francisco, which includes our working-class and middle-class households and families here in San Francisco, that this is in alignment with where San Francisco is at, and certainly in line with the values and vision that we have for the city today. So thank you, Supervisor Peskin.
Thank you. And with that, thank you again, Supervisor Peskin. I know that this is in your district, and I appreciate your willingness to work with Supervisor Cohen and I to develop a process to decide on what's appropriate. As someone who actually grew up in the neighborhood and experienced what it was like to be in a community where it was literally destroyed by the San Francisco Redevelopment Agency because of the leadership of this particular individual, I mean, his name was a really negative name in the community, and people like Mary Rogers and Leroy King and David Johnson and others who were a part of our community did everything they could to try and, you know, reverse the impacts, but the damage was done. It took place over a long period of time, and this person sadly was one of the most notorious persons responsible for what we know now today in the Fillmore community, the destruction of a vibrant African-American community, the challenges that we now deal with around many of the affordable housing developments, which were mostly once homeowners, African-American and Japanese-Americans who owned those homes. We noticed that in documents where it talked about redevelopment, one of the things that was used to cite the ability to do something like this was that it was a non-white community. And the fact that, you know, someone could actually, you know, use this kind of language to literally destroy a community, a thriving, again, African-American and Japanese community that live together in this neighborhood with thriving businesses, with home ownership, no, it may not have always had the best paint jobs on the homes, but it was a community. And I think it's, we're overdue. A couple of years ago, I got the budget and legislative analyst to do a report on, you know, what it would cost to change this name, and $5,400 in terms of signage. And I do think that there are a lot of individuals that are definitely worthy to hold this name. I've gotten a lot of feedback from members of the community, but I do think it's important that we develop the right process and we make a good decision, and we make a good decision based on the relevance of the opposite of what actually happened under the leadership of Justin Herman. So thank you for coming up with a creative way to remove a name that shouldn't be there in a more timely way, and I hope that the Wreck-And-Part Commission will take up this matter and do what is right, remove this name, and so that we can move forward and focus our attention on naming after the appropriate individual rather than the destruction of this particular man to a community. Thank you again, colleagues. And with that, seeing no other names on the roster, can we take this item? Same house, same call? Without objection, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Item number 19.
Item 19 is an ordinance to amend the police code to require rental car companies to provide written disclosures to customers advising them to remove valuables from the rental vehicle and lock the doors.
Thank you. Colleagues, I just want to thank the Neighborhood Services Committee for supporting this legislation, and all of the cosponsors, including Supervisor Yi, Farrell, Ronan, and Sheehy. This legislation is long overdue, and sadly, in San Francisco, we've had really a significant uptick in car break-ins, and they happen primarily in areas where there are a lot of tourists. And we noticed that specifically in Alamo Square, when we added signage to tell people to remove their valuables and lock their doors, we noticed with preliminary numbers that there was a decline in the number of car break-ins that happened in that particular area. And this legislation is really about notification. It's about when people come to San Francisco and they rent a car, we don't want them to go away with these terrible experiences. So all we're asking rent-a-car companies to do with this particular legislation is to let customers know to not leave their valuables in the car and to make sure that they lock their doors. Why lock their doors? Because that's one of the first questions law enforcement is asking members of the public who sadly have these experiences. Did you lock your doors? And that basically plays a major role in being able to prosecute people for these crimes. So I just wanted to say thank you. There's a lot of data that shows that this continues to be a problem, and the task force that I put together, one of the things that they highlighted is something that we should do regardless of law enforcement would be to make sure that people are aware, and nothing will stop this from happening, nothing will solve this problem completely, but if we make sure that folks are aware of the impacts, that people know what's going on, awareness is what's going to change what we know is sadly happening on our streets. Again, it won't stop the car break-ins, but it's a step to hopefully reducing them. And I know that Supervisor Yi's legislation is up next, and is also another way in which we are trying to help curb the car break-ins that are sadly happening all over streets in our city. This is one solution. It's not the entire solution to what we know is an epidemic, but we, as a policy body, will continue to do our best to work on solutions that could hopefully change this issue for the better. And so with that, colleagues, seeing no other names on the roster, can we take this item? Same house, same call? Without objection, the ordinance is passed unanimously on the first reading. Item number 20.
Item 20 is an ordinance to amend the police code to restrict visible barcodes and advertising on rental cars rented in the city or at San Francisco International Airport.
Supervisor Yi.
Thank you, President Breed, and I also want to thank the members of the Public Neighborhood Services Committee for supporting this piece of legislation at the committee level. That would be Supervisors Ronan, Sheehy, and Fewer. This legislation before you today has taken many months of negotiation with stakeholders. Our city is plagued with a growing car breaking epidemic, and our tourist industry has not been immune to this. Our unsuspecting tourists are easy targets. They are less likely to report or appear in court for crimes, and more likely to carry around their valuables. As a city who prides ourselves for being one of the world's most visited destinations, it's unfortunate that we have not done more to protect our visitors. I want to recognize the increased efforts by the San Francisco Police Department and the San Francisco District Attorney for trying to crack down on auto break-ins. While our agency may be doing more, that alone is not enough. We are also, we also need to deplore our strategies and look at our partners in the tourist industry for support. It's become an utter embarrassment when you think about it in the city. With 25 million visitors coming through last year, bringing nearly $9 billion in spending dollars, we need to show that we value them. For my district, neighborhood groups have taken the matter into their own hands, organizing neighborhood watches, placing signage throughout the community, warning the tourists that their cars are at risk. President Breed and I have been working with cross-sector of stakeholders, the San Francisco Police Department Neighborhood, and merchant groups, car rental agencies, and San Francisco Travel to address this growing issue. I want to thank President Breed for her legislation, which I also agree to co-sponsor, that we require our rental car companies to provide further disclaimers to their customers about leaving valuables in their car. The legislation that I authored also works for the rental car industry to ensure that these vehicles are not noticeably targeted because identifiers such as barcode stickers and advertisements. My own constituents have asked us to urge the car industry, the car rental industry, to do more, not only to warn their customers, but to protect them from making their vehicles less obvious. After several months of discussion, I am happy to announce that we have come to an agreement upon legislation with our car rental companies. I want to acknowledge the partnership of the car rental industry throughout this process, and we look forward to our continued collaboration to protect our consumers. This may very well lead to, you know, it's, when we started this, we focused in San Francisco, but even the car rental industry said that this would have a national impact into their industry, as this will probably move the whole nationwide industry to moving those barcodes. Well, lastly, I want, I am working, you know, as Supervisor, President Breed was saying, this legislation in itself is not going to solve the entire problem. All we're doing is providing tools and resources that would help with the bigger picture of car break-ins. Lastly, I am working with the police department to enhance our data collection on car break-ins citywide. The latest announcement that 311 is now taking reports on our car break-ins leave me concerned that constituents may be further discouraged from reporting these types of crimes. Hopefully, that's not going to be the case. We will be asking that the car rental industry to collect data and to volunteer and share their data with the police department for reporting purposes. We know how invaluable this information is for San Francisco Police Department and our investigators to identify trends and hotspot neighborhoods. Therefore, we need more robust streamlined ways for us to track break-ins, both for residents and tourists. This will also help us measure what strategies are working. It is our utmost goal to curb the number of break-ins throughout San Francisco, and this is only one part of the solution. And I wanted to also mention that later on, we'll be discussing different opportunities in targeting crimes. This would be with Supervisor Ronan and myself. And I also want to mention, last year, I had secured funding for a pilot neighborhood camera program, and along with the support of Supervisor Tang and President Breed. And along with the support of Supervisor Tang and President Bree, we are also increasing more funding for public signage to warn residents and visitors about leaving valuables in their vehicles. Again, I think this is just a small piece of the puzzle, larger puzzle in terms of how we're going to attack these car breaking crimes. So, at this point, I'd like to thank Supervisors Ronan and Shehe for their support, and I especially want to thank my chief of staff, Jen Lo, who worked tirelessly to put this together and working with the car rental industry to make sure that we're doing this in partnership. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Yi. Supervisor Kim.
I just want to add my name as a cosponsor to 19 and 20, and thank President Bree and Supervisor Yi for your work on this.
Thank you Supervisor Kim. And also, Madam Clerk, please add my name as a cosponsor to item number 20. Thank you again for your leadership Supervisor Yi.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other names on the roster, colleagues, can we take this item? Same house, same call. Without objection, the ordinance is passed unanimously on the first reading. Supervisor Cohen has requested that we hold off on item number 21 until she get here. So, if there's no objection, I will go to item number 22.
Item 22 is an ordinance to amend the park code to prohibit the use of glass beverage containers, with certain exceptions, in all city parks.
Supervisor Shehe.
Thank you. Earlier this year, I worked with the Recreation and Park Department to develop legislation on park conditions, especially in Dolores Park. This legislation before us takes one part of that proposal and puts it into the park code. Specifically, the ordinance before us today would ban glass citywide in our parks. This common sense proposal is similar to laws already in place in our federal park system and will help not only at Dolores, but in parks and playgrounds citywide. In committee, a few questions came up, and I want to address a key point. This ban would not apply to permitted events such as Stern Grove Festival. These permitted events have cleanup plans and ensure they leave no trace in our parks. If they would like to have glass at the event for organizers or attendees, that would be allowed if it is stated in the permit, lease, or license. In addition, the city attorney raised concerns about language that was deleted in committee, so I would like to move that we continue this one week.
Supervisor Shehe has made a motion to continue this item one week to the meeting of September 26, 2017, seconded by Supervisor Kim. And I want to acknowledge that Supervisor Cohen has just joined us. Colleagues, can we take that without objection? Without objection, this item will be continued until next week. Madam Clerk, please call items 23 and 24 together.
Items 23 and 24 are resolutions that determine that the issuance of an extension on premise for a liquor license does serve the public convenience or necessity of the city. For item 23, it's the issuance of an extension for a type 42 on-sale beer and wine public premises license to Rachel Chang for Zaza Nail Spa located at 543 Second Street. And for item 24, it's a transfer of a type 20 off-sale beer and wine liquor license to Jennifer Bernardo doing business at 7-Eleven located at 195 Pine Street that both will serve the public convenience.
Colleagues, can we take these items? Same house, same call. Without objection, the resolutions are adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, can we return to item number 21, please?
Item 21 is an ordinance to amend the Public Works Code to modify the exceptions to the surface-mounted facility site permit requirement and to amend the Administrative Code to require that the mural in-lu fees be deposited in the Public Works Street Beautification Fund to be used to fund murals and other beautification projects in the public right-of-way.
Supervisor Cohen.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, colleagues. Thank you for hearing this item today. As you may remember, we had a robust discussion at the, at the board several months ago about this particular piece of legislation. Specifically, we were discussing the calculations of the in-lu fee. Since that meeting, we've worked closely with Public Works, the Arts Commission, providers and colleagues around the costs. As you will see in the legislation today, the in-lu fee for murals has now been calculated to $2,000 per surface-mounted facility or $48 per square foot of the size of a box. And this is taking into consideration that whichever calculation results in the larger cost. This was supported unanimously by Public Works and Neighborhood Services Committee last week. And as you may remember, part of the objective of this legislation is to avoid future litigation about pending legislation for these boxes. It's not about a free-for-all. It's not about a giveaway. It's not about allowing telecom companies to own our public right-of-way. I have copies of the updated covenant letter, for those of you that may be interested. And I want to acknowledge my colleagues Supervisor Ronan and then Supervisor Fewer, who've, were very helpful in the conversations around this legislation. So, with that said, colleagues, I'd like to ask for your support on this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Cohen. And on item number 21, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On item 21, Supervisor Kim.
No.
Kim, no. Supervisor Peskin.
No.
Peskin, no. Supervisor Ronan. Ronan, aye. Supervisor Shehe.
Yes.
Shehe, aye. Supervisor Yi.
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Breed.
Aye.
Breed, aye. Supervisor Cohen.
Aye.
Cohen, aye. Supervisor Fewer.
Aye.
Fewer, aye. There are six ayes and two nos with Supervisors Kim and Peskin in the dissent.
The ordinance is passed on the first reading. All right. It is past 2:30, and we have one 2:30 special commendation today, and it will be given by Supervisor Sandy Fewer from District 1.
Thank you very, thank you very much, President Bree. Today, colleagues, it is my distinct pleasure to call up one of Richmond District's unknown champions, Debbie Joseph. Debbie lives in her childhood home next door to Cabrillo Playground, and like many residents, is proud of the playground and her neighborhood and has been an active neighborhood booster. Unlike most, however, she has channeled her love of the neighborhood in a unique and transformative direction. Debbie spent much of her career traveling outside of San Francisco. When she was done with her life's work and came home to retire, she discovered that Cabrillo Playground had fallen into despair, and the sidewalk in front of the playground had become a magnet for litter and dog waste. She banded together like-minded neighbors and began a campaign to reinvigorate Cabrillo Playground, and also hit upon a brilliant and beautiful idea for improving the sidewalk in front of the playground, plant a garden full of San Francisco's city flower, the Dahlia. She has tended Cabrillo Playground Dahlia Garden for the past eight years. During this time, the dumping ground has been transformed into a destination point for Dahlia lovers throughout the neighborhood and city, and anyone who wants to walk through some of the most beautiful flowers imaginable. This year, the garden boasts 170, 107 exhibition-quality Dahlia plants and won Best in Show at this, this year at the Dahlia Society of California's 100th Anniversary Show. Debbie attended Lafayette Elementary School, Presidio Junior High, and Lowell High School. She's lived in Hawaii, Mississippi, and Seattle, in Seattle, Washington, while working in academia for the U.S. Naval Oceanographer and for commercial cable route engineering interest before retiring in 2005 and returning to San Francisco. We are grateful to have her back and offer this commendation as a token of San Francisco's appreciation for her many years of work. Thank you very much, Debbie. Would you come up, please, to the podium?
Thank you very much, Sandra. I really appreciate it, and so will the neighbors. And we, we brought you some.
Thank you so much. Lucky me.
Thank you very much.
Well, colleagues, that was our only commendation today, so we will return to our regular business. Madam Clerk, please call item number 25.
Item 25 is an ordinance to amend the Business and Tax Regulations Code to reduce the size of the Central Market Street and Tenderloin Area Citizens Advisory Committee from 11 seats to five seats. To set a sunset date for the committee, prohibit the city administrator from executing a community benefit agreement subject to the committee's review, and to make other administrative changes.
Roll call vote.
On item 25, Supervisor Kim.
Aye.
Kim, aye. Supervisor Peskin.
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Ronan.
Aye.
Ronan, aye. Supervisor Shehe.
Aye.
Shehe, aye. Supervisor Yi.
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Breed.
Aye.
Breed, aye. Supervisor Cohen.
Aye.
Cohen, aye. Supervisor Fewer.
Aye.
Fewer, aye. There are eight ayes.
The ordinance is passed unanimously on the first reading. Item number 26.
Item 26 is a motion to appoint Chief William Scott and Lieutenant Michael Dealey for indefinite terms to the Bay Area Regional Interoperable Communications System Authority.
Same house, same call. Without objection, the motion is approved unanimously. Item 27.
Item 27 is a motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of Al Perez to the Entertainment Commission for a term ending July 1, 2021.
Same house, same call. Without objection, the motion is approved unanimously. Item 28.
Item 28 is a motion to appoint Vanessa Bohm, Kent Wu, Joey Jackson Morgan, Roberto Ariel Vargas, Jonathan Butler, Aria Chanan Undec, Jana Cordero, and Lyra Eng, terms ending December 31, 2018, to the sugary drinks distributor tax advisory committee.
Same house, same call. Without objection, the motion is approved unanimously. Supervisor Yi, did you have a comment on that item?
You know, a quick comment.
You did? Okay, so I'm going to, you want to make a motion to rescind the vote?
Sure, I'll make a motion to rescind the vote.
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Yi, seconded by Supervisor Kim. Colleagues, can we take that without objection? Without objection, the vote has been rescinded. On item number 28, Supervisor Yi.
I just wanted to say that the, the vote that we took for this last item of appointing, I believe, eight, eight members, and there were like 21 applicants. And even though we decided on, on the final, I think, eight people, individuals, I just want to point out or mention that of the 21 or so applicants that, that came, every one of them were, had high qualifications. And I want to really commend not only staff, but Supervisor Cohen for trying to get these people to come and serve. And it's not, it's very unusual to, to have so many fine applicants. And I just want to make, state that publicly because we, we'd like to encourage those that did not get appointed to continue with our, our effort to, to work with the, the residents in San Francisco to cut back on the sugary drinks.
Thank you Supervisor Yi. Supervisor Cohen.
Thank you. Since we made a motion to rescind the vote, I thought I'll add a couple of comments to this item before we take the vote again. Well, needless to say, I'm going to ask for your support, and I hope that you will vote yes once again. And I want to also acknowledge that the list of candidates was absolutely superb. I want to echo what Supervisor Yi said. It's been, it's, it's not often that you find such an excited group of folks that are willing to roll up their sleeves and volunteer their time and their energy and their, and, and professionals in this area of expertise. I think that the caliber of the applicants, the testament to the broad community of parents, of advocates, of researchers who work hard and fought day and night for years to get the truth out about the impacts about, of, of these sugary drinks out there, and also to put forth attacks to counteract the devastating impacts of type 2 diabetes as well as other chronic diseases. And again, I want to note that these are diseases that are preventable. I'm proud and excited for the great work to come to this incredible body, coming from this group of committed people. I do want to note that it is especially important today for us to make these appointments, given that the Ninth Circuit Court decided to approve a preliminary injunction against our former colleague Supervisor, now Senator Scott Weiner's legislation. When he was here on this body, he authored a piece of legislation that would add warning labels to advertisements of sugary drinks in the city and county. Well, the court has decided to approve a preliminary injunction. And so what this means is that we're not able to implement Senator Weiner's law until another court decides if it's constitutional or, if it's constitutional to warn people about the harms of sugary drinks. So, fear not to all the folks that are listening at home. The tobacco industry went back and forth with warning labels, and we, we do have warning labels on our, on cigarettes. So, I think it's only a matter of time and with extreme urgency and pressure that we continue to put forward thoughtful policies to continue to put pressure on those that, that are making decisions. But as far as this body is concerned, I want to thanks, thank those folks that applied to be a part of this committee. And I want to offer an early congratulations to those who will be appointed. And this is important because these are inaugural appointments before us today. So, I also want to recognize two of my staff members that worked tremendously on this, Brittany Chiquata and Yo-Yo Chan. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Cohen. Colleagues, can we take this item? Same house, same call. Without objection, the motion is approved unanimously. Madam Clerk, let's go to roll call for introductions.
Supervisor Kim, you're first to introduce new business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Today, I am proud to be introducing finally the last piece of the Western Soma Community Plan, which is the establishment of the South of Market LGBTQI Leather District. This coming weekend, we are celebrating one of the largest outdoor events in the state of California, the Folsom Street Fair, which brings an estimated 400,000 people to our South of Market neighborhood, literally a block away from my house, to celebrate the leather culture. As some of you may know, Folsom Street began as Mega Hood in 1984 by a group of local activists led by lesbian Kathleen Connell and gay Filipino-American Michael Valerio, who wanted to bring attention to the LGBTQ displacement occurring at the time in the South of Market caused by the San Francisco Redevelopment Agency and to the AIDS crisis, which had a significant impact in the South of Market. When I worked with Lone Star Bar on their legacy business status, I saw and was deeply moved by the photos, the collection of photos that they have archived on that bar from the 80s showing their patrons, many who had, were HIV-positive, standing outside the business, marking a tragic point in our history when our city, our state, and our nation abandoned a community in their greatest time of need. It was places like Lone Stars and bars and nightlife venues that became the community centers during this epidemic and where many sought community and refuge. Since the 19, while not, while not as well-known as the Castro neighborhood, since the 1960s, the South of Market has been a mecca for the LGBTQI community. And much like Comptons in the mid-market, a Tenderloin neighborhood, it became a hub for those who are more on the fringe and did not feel that they had a place in the mainstream queer culture. Back in 2007, a group of community members worked together to launch the first-ever community-led area plan, now known as the Western Soma Community Plan. And they spent seven years leading community processes and hearings and meetings to talk about how they could plan for an upzoning of a neighborhood that they knew was occurring, but from a community perspective, keep taking into account what the community want to see in the Western Soma area. More housing, and of course, a need for commercial office space, but a way to preserve the existing manufacturing and arts organization, and of course, the historical and current communities, the Filipino community and the LGBTQ leather community. And in 2013, we finally passed this plan. And last year, we were able to introduce the Soma Filipinas Social Cultural Historic District along the lines of the Western Soma Plan called for. And now, today, I'm proud to introduce the second Social Cultural Historic District, the Western Soma LGBTQ social leather social heritage proposal. We are exactly, we are taking on this process of creating these cultural districts in our neighborhoods, not just so we can remember their history and the contributions that they've made to these neighborhoods in San Francisco, but also as a tool to fight against the displacement that we are now quickly seeing in our district. against the displacement that we are now quickly seeing in our district over the last several years. We want to preserve the vibrant history of the LGBT community and the Filipino community in the South of Market, but we also want to develop a planning and economic development plan that will help to continue to support our small businesses and nightlife spaces in the leather community that again have been a community center and refuge for so many of our residents in an ever-changing South of Market. So what we are launching today is not just a memorialization of history, but a living district that collects tools that can help us fight the rising costs of both commercial and residential rent, and also to assess neighborhood needs. I want to thank members of the South of Market Leather Community who worked with us here today, historian Gail Rubin, Shane Watson, and Donna Grave for their work on the San Francisco LGBT Historic Context Statement, Nate Albee and Rachel Ryan from The Stud, Patrick Finger and Beth Bicostal of Folsom Street Events, Angel Garfield of the San Francisco Leather Alliance, and the San Francisco Girls of Leather, Scott Peterson from the Powerhouse, and of course, to everyone at Mr. Leather. I also want to recognize my cosponsor Supervisor Jeff Sheehy for cosponsoring this as well. This is the beginning of the process, and I look forward to our community engagement in doing so. Finally, I have to recognize many members of the communities that participated over seven years between 2007 and 2013 in the process to put together this community plan. Toby Levy, who was the vice chair, Paul Lord, who at Plowing Department really single-handedly pushed this process through, John Elberling, Dennis Suarez, Scott Kuiper, Luke Lightning, Glendon Hyde, April Benaracion, and Tom Rudulovich, and of course, want to recognize two individuals who we all miss greatly, one who chaired this process, Jim Miko, rest in peace, who owned a small business in the South of Market for decades and really pushed both the Western Soma Community Plan and inspired the idea of recognizing the leather district in the Western South of Market, and also to Jazzy Collins, who served on this task force as well. May you also rest in peace, longtime South of Market resident, transgender activist and leader, who had also pushed through this in the process. And colleagues, the rest I submit.
Thank you, Supervisor Kim. Supervisor Peskin?
Submit.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Ronan?
Can I be re-referred after Supervisor Yi?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sheehy?
Submit.
Okay, Supervisor Yi.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, I am, with Supervisor Ronan, going to be revisiting legislation that I reintroduced to create dedicated units in our police districts to solve and abate car break-ins, bike theft, and other property crimes. As you recall, after several hearings on neighborhood public, property crimes and conversations with public safety officers, we passed legislation last year to support focused attention on the issue at the local police station level. While the original legislation passed last year by a majority of the board of supervisors, it was swiftly vetoed. And despite assurances that all efforts were being made to address the growing issue of car break-ins, home break-ins, and bike thefts, we thought that things were getting better, but that was short-lived. The problem was only, has only gotten worse. The latest numbers are startling. We went from 24,000 reported car break-ins citywide to 27,000 reported car break-ins during the period of January to June from last year to this year. When I first reintroduced it, I thought, okay, maybe we should be pushing it then, but at the time, we just had a new police chief come in, and I wanted to give him a chance to sort of organize his department to actually counter this. There was an attempt to do some centralized task force on this, and more recently, that’s been pretty much agreed upon that that’s not the direction that the police department wanted to go. And basically, it’s failed. It’s time to, and it’s really timely, given the circumstances that we’re facing with the increase, that we try something and support something that’s hopefully going to work. It’s also infuriating that the past couple of weeks, it has come to light that some members of our law enforcement have been victims of break-ins, leading firearms, being stolen straight from the trunks of the vehicles. There’s no doubt that violent crimes should be a priority of our law enforcement, but the reality is that everyday residents are feeling the negative impacts of property crimes. As our city faces growing needs, it has become clear that the attention and resources of our officers get diverted away from the quality of life issues every time there is another pressing issue. Every time there is a large event in the city, our local police districts get impacted. It’s unacceptable. I want to thank the police department and officers who have attempted to do more with less. If anything, this legislation will strengthen our neighborhood district stations, which have been impacted by shifting needs and other staffing issues. This is why Supervisor Ronan and I are moving this legislation forward with emphasis on the need for minimum staffing at each of our neighborhood police districts to focus on car break-ins, bike theft, and other property crimes. We also want to provide more support for these respective units to better coordinate with each other and across public safety departments. The legislation also emphasizes the importance and effectiveness of community policing. It also provides flexibility so that the police captains and their staff could adopt the new crime trends, to new crime trends, and allocate their resources accordingly. The police chief will also have discretion as to how to roll out these units. The reality is, property crimes is a symptom of a bigger systemic issue. We recognize that the San Francisco Police Department alone cannot solve this issue. We need the support of the district attorney, who work closely with our officers to solve crimes and bring cases forward. It is appalling that so many of these crimes are perpetuated by the same individuals. We need, we also need to find ways to get these individuals off the streets and make it less enticing for young people to be involved with these crimes. I am looking forward to working with the board, the mayor, Chief Scott, and other community leaders to address this chronic issue. The residents of San Francisco have also already spoken out loud and clear. We can act stand as policymakers and a board of supervisors, idly hoping that this problem would just go away by itself. Can we finally put politics aside and work on something proactive is the question. I want to thank Supervisor Ronan and Supervisor Fewer for the cosponsoring this legislation with me. I hope we can finally take the step forward, and I’m looking forward to having very robust discussion around this issue at the committee level and at this food court level in the coming weeks. The rest I submit.
Supervisor Yi, and with the permission from Supervisor Breed, Fewer, and Cohen, Supervisor Ronan, you’re welcome to go next.
Thank you so much. I wanted to just start out by thanking Supervisor Yi for taking leadership on this issue for so long. You know, I was a legislative aide when you first introduced this proposal over a year ago, and I thought it was the right approach then, and I appreciate when I came to you after learning that a gun was stolen from a police officer’s car and murdered a young man in my district that was very beloved in the community and said enough is enough. Can we partner and move forward on this legislation, again, that you so graciously let me work on this issue with you? Clearly, the status quo isn’t working. You presented a vision a year and a half ago, Supervisor Yi. The mayor vetoed that vision, and it’s time that we look at it again. So I’m proud to be sponsoring this legislation with you. Nearly every single day, I walk past broken glass on the street, and every time I talk to, go to a community meeting, I talk to constituents who tell me that they’ve had their car broken into, not once, not twice, but several times a year. And we know that even the huge increase in car break-ins that we recently learned about, 100 and, I think, 28% in my district alone, is only the tip of the iceberg. I know that many of my constituents don’t even report car break-ins because they don’t have faith that the city can do anything or does anything about it. And I have to just say that the, this regular car break-in and needing to fix a $300-$400 window on a regular basis is devastating to many families in San Francisco who are barely hanging on as it is with our high rents. I joke, although it’s not funny, that it’s almost as if we have a car break-in tax in San Francisco that you have to pay on a regular basis. And it’s even more ironic that even officers in San Francisco and officers that are storing very dangerous weapons can’t even prevent their cars from being broken into. We just learned this morning of a sheriff who also stored his gun in his trunk, and sure enough, it was stolen. Enough is enough. Also, bike theft is a major, major issue in my district and disproportionately impacts low-income people, and the constituents in my district are fed up, and understandably so. The fact is that what the police department is doing now to address car break-ins is not working and bike thefts. Supervisor Yi, Supervisor Fewer and I want to create specific car break-in and bike theft units in every single police station in San Francisco because we believe that it’s time for focused attention on this issue. If we want to see different results, we need to try something new. We are requiring at least one officer in each police station solely focused on this issue, and then of course, it’s up to police and the police chief and captains if they decide to staff these units with more officers, in particular districts where car break-ins are particularly problematic. We’re trying to provide maximum flexibility, which I know Chief Scott wants, and I understand why and deserves, but also ensuring that this epidemic is addressed. Just like the legislation that we unanimously voted on and supported today around rental cars, this legislation will not be the silver bullet. We do need more beat officers on our streets engaging in proactive community policing, and I’d like to thank Chief Scott for moving in this direction. I think it’s absolutely the right way to go, and we need the DA to prosecute the most serious offenders. We also need innovative job training and employment opportunities for people who have committed these crimes so that they can learn a new trade and not reoffend. But we also need to make sure that we have the type of focused attention to this issue that we have not yet had in San Francisco, and we want investigative experts engaging in cutting-edge policing techniques and focusing all the way from prevention to enforcement to stop the endless cycle of car break-ins and bike thefts. We owe that much to the residents of San Francisco. The rest I submit.
Thank you, Supervisor Ronan. President Breed?
Submit.
Thank you, President Breed. Supervisor Cohen is submitting, and Supervisor Fewer.
Thank you very much. Today, colleagues, I’d like to introduce a hearing on the city’s existing immigrant legal defense efforts through the Public Defender’s Office as well as community-based organizations funded through the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs. In particular, I hope to explore how the recent announcement from the White House to rescind the DACA program might have an impact on San Francisco, our immigrant communities, and these existing services. The city made real commitments to our immigrant communities last year through setting aside additional funds for legal defense services in addition to other programs, and we will continue to uphold that commitment in the face of unbelievable threats from Washington, DC. And while we know that DACA is an opportunity for only a small part of our undocumented immigrant communities in the US, the rescindment of this program is heartbreaking. With the looming October 5th deadline, there’s an incredible amount of work going on into informing existing DACA recipients about how to renew their application, and I’d like to share that the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs has a free DACA renewal workshop and information session next week, Saturday, September 23rd, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Mission High School. For more information, please visit the OCIA website at sfgov.org/oceia. Thank you. So in District 1, we are very happy to have a community announcement today. We are excited to announce that the first annual Autumn Moon Festival will take place on Saturday, September 23rd, 2017, on Clement Street, between 5th and 8th avenues, from 10 a.m. till 3 p.m. This festival is organized in collaboration with Assemblymember Phil Ting’s office, Clement Street Merchants Association, the Richmond District Neighborhood Center, Community Youth Center, and my office. The Autumn Moon Festival celebrations have been held throughout Asia for well over 1,000 years. This holiday is a time to reflect upon the bounty of the summer harvest, the fullness of the moon, and the myth of the immortal goddess Chang-oh, who lives in the moon. The Moon Festival is often considered a Chinese Thanksgiving because of its celebration of gratitude and inclusion of abundant food, including the popular moon cake. The Autumn Moon Festival will be a fun, family-friendly event where attendees will have a taste of the cultural diversity of the Richmond District. Over 50 community vendors and exhibitors and many performers will be in attendance in this celebration of culture, history, and community experiences. Hope that you and your families can come and join this event. The rest I submit.
Thank you, Supervisor Fewer. And Madam President, seeing no other names on the roster, that concludes the introduction of new business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please read public comment.
At this time, the public may now address the entire Board of Supervisors for up to two minutes on items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the Board and items 31 through 43, the items on the adoption without reference to committee calendar. Pursuant to the Board’s rules of order, please direct your remarks to the Board as a whole and not to individual supervisors, nor to the audience. Speakers using interpretation assistance will be allowed twice the amount of time to testify. If you would like to display your document on the overhead projector, please clearly state such to SFG TV and then remove the document when you’d like the screen to return to live coverage of the meeting.
Thank you. First speaker, please.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, Ray Hartz, Director, San Francisco Open Government. Every single meeting in the city and county of San Francisco has a section on their agenda which says “Know Your Rights Under the Sunshine Ordinance.” Question for you, members of the Board. Do you think Ray Hartz knows his rights under the Sunshine Ordinance? I’ve got 34 orders of determination. These aren’t just complaints filed. These are findings by a legally constituted body, which comes under the purview of this Board of Supervisors, saying my rights were violated 34 different times. Freedom of speech is not secure in the city and county of San Francisco. I’m living proof of that. If you think you’re immune, just go and try to talk to a public meeting about something they don’t want talked about, and don’t look to the city attorney to protect your constitutional right to free speech because they will sit silently while it is abused. Access to public records is not secure in the city and county of San Francisco. I’m living proof of that. And if you don’t think it’s true and it doesn’t apply to you, try asking public bodies or city agencies for documents they don’t want people to see. These 34 orders of determination are all a matter of public record from the Sunshine Ordinance Task Force and are proof of what I’m saying. Next week, I’ll talk about these ones, all having to do with free speech, and in particular, your clerk of the Board, who on her latest one has now been referred to the Ethics Commission for knowingly and willfully violating the rules of the-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Stephen N. I’m the manager of Water Resources for the Alameda County Water District. I’m speaking to item 43 on your agenda. First, I wish to thank the Board, the motion you’re packing to direct the Planning Department to enlist an independent third-party review of the model. review of the model used by the Planning Department confirms that the Board of Supervisors is serious about protecting and restoring Steelhead. While seeking a third-party expert to review the Planning Department's previous work is notable and important, what is just as important is, one, how will the Planning Department select a third-party expert? Can it be just anybody? Two, exactly what will be the scope of review? Will the scope be so narrow that the third-party expert really has no choice but to rubber-stamp the previous work? Before adopting the motion, we encourage you to ask Planning the following question: How will stakeholders be involved in the independent third-party selection process and the development of the scope of services? If the answer is in the context of meeting the minimal requirements of CEQA, that stakeholders will be informed what the Planning Department and SFPC staff will do without real collaboration, the third-party expert review will be a missed opportunity. Accordingly, the proposed additional finding that we sent on September 13th and is shown on the projector now does not revise the actual words of the original motion that was previously made by Supervisor Peskin and the board approved unanimously. The added finding reflects our request for Planning Department and SFPC staff to truly work collaboratively with the Alameda Creek Fisheries Work Group to select and work with the independent third-party expert. Thank you for your consideration of our request.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon.
And ma'am, can you please pull the microphone down close to your mouth? Thank you.
We are the San Francisco citizens. We came for about number 32, Comfort Woman Day, excuse me, September 22nd, 2017. Thank you. Thanks for opportunity to speak. Dear Board of Supervisors, we, as a people who select you, hope you thought will be equal to everyone. Where I strongly protest against resolution declaring September 22nd, 2017 as Comfort Woman Day in San Francisco City. Please think about the history of the world. Don't pick up only Japan, what they did. How about Europe or even United States in Philippines or Korea in Philippines or other country about Comfort Woman? Today, our society needs peace in the world, not against each other. Time to hold a hand together and help each other to bring San Francisco City to be a great city. I'm a San Francisco citizen. You resent some reporter sometime write, rightest group or whatever, or whether not rightest group or left either. Declare for that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I just want to speak about Comfort Woman's Day. Dear member of the City of Supervisor, I strongly oppose establishment of the September 22nd as the annual Comfort Woman Day in the city. This plan serves no purpose other than engaging in geopolitics on behalf of other interests and dividing our community. While mentioning human trafficking, we should also include men, not women and girls alone. There are a lot of undocumented immigrants who have been forced to work under horrible condition in California and even in our city. And there is the issue of black slaves. I wonder why the same logic the Board of Supervisors has not initiate any resolution or proposal to set a day in honor of the black slaves. The Pacific Ocean War ended more than 70 years ago. There was no movement or proposal to establish a so-called Comfort Woman statue or a Comfort Woman Day on the 50th anniversary of the end of the Pacific War. We have to ask why now? Is it now a struggle in the city for influence between the two most powerful countries in Asia? I wonder, I firmly believe, however, that the city should not engage in geopolitics on behalf of foreign interest. The proposal to establish the so-called Comfort Woman Day in our city is perceived by many, particularly in the Japanese community, as part of the campaign by some interest to smear Japan and its people. It should be noted that Japan has played a positive and very constructive.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for sharing. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Miyoko McDavid. I strongly oppose resolution declaring September 22nd as a Comfort Woman Day in the city and the county of San Francisco. This subject of Comfort Woman is not simply woman's issue, but political dispute between Korea and Japan. Many facts have been distorted and exaggerated. The issue is politically, socially sensitive and controversial subject. It is unnecessary to introduce an icon of foreign political dispute into our city of San Francisco. The content of this resolution is not accurate historically, and it is unfairly written. It is biased for only one side. Please stop bashing one country, adding inaccurate Comfort Woman history into the resolution. Establishing Comfort Woman Day in San Francisco could bring hatred and disharmony into our community. Different ethnic groups in San Francisco should join together and should focus on building a better community with harmony, not racial conflicts. As supervisor, your role is crucial and so important to make a good decision for our community. We trust your discerning sense of good historical judgment. I urge you that you will not adopt the Comfort Woman Day resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Junko, and I'll make it simple. But I came here to beg all of you to research the truth before you made a judgment, anything, but especially this issue, the Comfort Woman, because this is a very sensitive issue between South Korea and Japan. So please don't make a mistake. That's all. I just wanted to beg all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I am strongly against the item number 32, Comfort Woman Day. The hate-Japan education in China and Korea has been promoting anti-Japan movement even in the US 70 years after the last war. History shouldn't be created, fabricated, or hidden by certain countries' government in the United States. Please do not allow foreign countries' government to bring their propaganda to San Francisco. There are plenty of documents which clearly prove that the story described in this item didn't occur. One of the items is this. Real freedom, true human rights, and true history should be valued in San Francisco City. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and I'm talking in regards to this item 32, the Comfort Woman Day. And I am strongly against this resolution declaring September 22nd as Comfort Woman Day in the city and county of San Francisco. This Comfort Woman issue deals with matter between foreign governments and has nothing to do with San Francisco. And moreover, this matter was settled. At the end of 2015, South Korea and Japan officially put the Comfort Woman issue to rest, putting an end to the rift that separated the two countries. And this historic agreement still stands today and remains important to US foreign policies as we seek to unite American allies in the Asian-Pacific region as we face North Korea, which is a serious threat right now. And this establishing the Comfort Women's Day within the city effectively undermines the delicate international agreement reached by South Korea and Japan and reopens a rift in thawing relationship between the two countries. And it was, in fact, the United States which acted as the mediator for this historic agreement. But simply, this is a bad foreign policy, and it's a move, and this could result in a serious consequence in this international relationship. So therefore, I ask you not to adopt this issue. Comfort Woman Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm strongly against Comfort Woman Day in the city and county of San Francisco. There are many factual errors. Comfort Woman issue started by Asahi Shinbon, a newspaper in Japan. They spread the story based on Seiji Yoshida's book, My War Crime, Forcing Transportation of Koreans, published in 1983. Before that, there had been no such story. Later, Yoshida himself admitted it was a lie. He fabricated the story to earn money. In 1989, Yoshida's book was translated into Korean. This is a newspaper, Chez Newspaper, put an article that Yoshida's story had been a lie. A Japanese historian, Ikuhiko Hata, also visited and inquired at Chez Island and proved that Yoshida's story had been a lie. On August 5th, 2014, Asahi Shinbon newspaper also admitted that Yoshida's story was fabrication. So I believe San Francisco must not make a historical judgment without verification. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm strongly against Comfort Woman Day in San Francisco. You are allowing North Korean political maneuvering and Chinese Communist Party in China to secretly influence San Francisco citizens. This resolution will create racial conflict and definitely weaken a tie between Japan and United States alliance promoting democracy in the world. Before 1990, there was not a story of Comfort Woman in Korea. It all started from Yoshida's book that was translated in Korean in 1989. Even Jeju Korean newspaper wrote that Yoshida's story was a lie. And in 2014, Asahi newspaper, the major Japanese newspaper, officially admitted this article or story, Yoshida's story was fabrication. Let's stop making a false judgment without verification. At the end, are you really sure you want to add more power to Chinese Communist government in China and North Korea's totalitarian president in this midst of very, very serious crisis? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My opinion, I oppose item number 32, the proposal of Comfort Women's Day. This, you know, this great Democratic San Francisco City Council is making a decision which affects now and into future generations only negatively from my point of view. And this basically, mostly decision is made on, there are many, many facts, but the one based on this so-called Comfort Woman, Ms. Lee Young-soo's statement and her appearance. I know she has appeared in the city council. She has changed her statement at least 14 times or more over same things. And here is the excerpt I researched. I could, actually, it's not only 14 and 20 times she has changed. And can you trust her statement and her appearance for the historical facts which affect generation to come? So please, member of city council, supervisors, please review the fact. And for example, the newest thing is Asahi newspaper who is correcting fabrications. Anyway, I really thankful for the tie between Japan and the United States for democratic country and human rights. Let's keep a strong tie. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I applaud your talk behalf of item number 32. The Comfort Women Memorial Day is against disparate of an international deal between Asian countries. We all have been pursuing a future-oriented global relationship, and such Memorial Day can create conflict between Chinese and Korean background and Japanese background citizens here in this multicultural society of San Francisco known by its love to its citizens that has been accepting immigrants from all over the globe, Asians, Latinos, and Europeans. Back in the days when Europe had colonies all over the world, there were wars and religious conflicts. However, in order to build the future, people overcame them. Otherwise, further steps would not be possible. But if you want to talk about the past, we should then create Memorial Days for every single country and people in the past that were under war and colonialism. America and its native citizens are examples of that. We need to widen our vision and think about the world rather than specific group or ethnicity. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please, Mr. DeCosta.
My name is Francisco DeCosta, and I represent the First People of San Francisco. During public comment, it would be respectful for all the supervisors to pay attention. But some of you supervisors can see the right, as I am speaking, some people are not paying attention. And that's going to come to bite you all in the butt. Now, let me make it very clear. If you represent the people, you need to do it with empirical data. Just like I saw some of you all jump on the bandwagon on DACA, not knowing that President Obama, through fiat, brought about DACA and then sunsetted it for two years, got out of office, and created a mess. So yesterday, when there stood DACA students, told Nancy Pelosi what she needed to hear So yesterday, when there stood DACA students, told Nancy Pelosi what she needed to hear, because I see many of y'all like lapdogs hovering around Nancy Pelosi and thinking that she is a leader when she is not. You've heard some women today talk about empirical data, Comfort Women. Y'all just jump on the bandwagon and forget that it takes time to heal, and it's very bad to open wounds at this time where many of the women have stated in their own way what is right and what is wrong. As usual, before I finish, you have two supervisors there still conducting themselves. Disrespectfully, ashamed, and disgraced-
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Very much.
Thank you for sharing. Before the next speaker, are there any other members of the public who would like to address the board during general public comment? Please step up. Mr. Gilberti. SFG TV overhead, please.
Tom Gilberti, please. No boxes approaching an intersection on the right-hand side. There was one at Hayes and Van Ness coming from the east, coming from the Van Ness and Market, and it was reduced to a smaller box. But still, any box hides young folks, little folks, short people, and people in wheelchairs. Thank you. The state is fighting the federal government on environmental issues, climate control issues, national parks, DACA sanctuary. I'm asking the city to do the same against the state. Rent control, Bay Area needs it. Ellis Act evictions, San Francisco, the Bay Area needs it. Non-cause evictions, the Bay Area, San Francisco needs it. Community housing versus housing to make developers and real estate property owners very rich. The community has a value in this situation here now. I heard the mayor, just a couple of minutes ago, it was, "The value of this land is too valuable for people that are living and working in San Francisco to be a part of. They can't afford it. That's a scheme. We need to address that issue." And that's a property reduction. I mean, we're restricting property. Well, that's been done twice before. If you were black, when George Washington was around, you were a piece of property. Same as if you were a woman. If you were raped as a woman, you, instead of being a criminal, you paid a fine to the owner of the woman, the husband, the father.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to provide public comment at this time? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, let's go to the items for adoption without reference to committee.
Items 31 through 43 are on the Adoption Without Committee Reference Agenda. A unanimous vote today is required for adoption of these resolutions and motions. Any supervisor may require a resolution to go to committee.
Supervisor Fewer?
Thank you very much. I'd like to sever item number 32, please.
Supervisor Peskin?
43.
What about 42?
I'm happy to sever item 42. I don't know what we're going to discuss.
I'll just sever it, and then it'll be easy. Thank you. On the remaining items, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On items 31 through 43, minus 43 and 32, Supervisor Kim.
42, 42, and 43.
Supervisor Kim. Kim, aye. Supervisor Peskin?
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Ronan?
Aye.
Ronan, aye. Supervisor Shihi?
Aye.
Shihi, aye. Supervisor Yi?
Aye.
Yi, aye. Supervisor Breed?
Aye.
Breed, aye. Supervisor Cohen?
Aye.
Cohen, aye. Supervisor Fewer?
Aye.
Fewer, aye. There are eight ayes.
Those items are adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, read item number 32, please.
Item 32 is a resolution to declare September 22nd, 2017, as Comfort Women's Day in the city and county of San Francisco.
Supervisor Fewer?
Thank you, President Breed. Colleagues, I have an amendment before you that I passed out. The amendment strikes item 16, line 16, that says, "Whereas the Japanese government to this day has never officially apologized to those survivors," and I'd like to strike that, please. So I'd like to make a moment, a motion to offer this amendment to strike line 16.
Okay. Supervisor Fewer has made a motion to amend, seconded by Supervisor Yi. Seeing no other names on the roster, colleagues, can we take this item, same house, same call?
Excuse me.
Oh, Supervisor Yi.
I just thank you, Supervisor Fewer, for bringing this to us. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Supervisor Yi. Colleagues, can we take this item, same house, same call? Without objection, the resolution as amended is adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, read item number 42, please.
Item 42 is a motion that the Board of Supervisors convenes in closed session on October 3, 2017, with the Department of Human Resources regarding labor negotiations of the city's labor, open labor contracts.
Supervisor Peskin?
Madam President, colleagues, given the board's agenda for October 3, I would like to amend this to have it be at a time certain at 3:00 P.M.
Madam Clerk, for the forward board calendar, are there any appeals?
There are several on the forward calendar, Madam President. However, not all of them. So Peralta, 639 Peralta Street, is on the forward calendar, and I understand public comment will have to be taken on that matter despite the recent changes that are occurring there.
And what else?
There are two items, 2505 Noriega Street, a SEQA and a CU authorization, which are also on the forward calendar.
So can we move that time up? How long will this item take?
For that agenda, Madam President, we could plan to schedule the labor negotiation, a 3:00 P.M. special order first, and then go to the conditional use authorization on the SEQA items.
Okay. Supervisor Peskin?
Madam President, I don't believe that it will take any longer than 30 minutes.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, just for clarity, is there any way to move those other 3:00 P.M. special orders specifically to 3:30 as well?
The Noriega Street items are scheduled for 4:30, but the Peralta will be at 3:00 P.M.
Okay, there's only one 3:00 P.M.?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Peskin has made a motion to amend. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Shihi. Colleagues, can we take that without objection? Without objection, the amendment passes. And on the item as amended, can we take that same house, same call? Without objection, the motion as amended is adopted unanimously. Item number 43.
Item 43 is a motion to adopt findings reversing the Planning Commission's certification of the final environmental impact report for the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission's proposed Alameda Creek recapture project.
Supervisor Peskin?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, and thank you for your participation in the SEQA appeal that was brought by the Alameda County Water District that we discussed on September 5. I have reviewed the findings and the motion, and I believe they reflect the deliberations and findings that we made on September 5. Contrary to the statements, and I wish that they were, oh, they are still here, made by staff of the Alameda County Water District, I think this does reflect what I intended. I do, however, want to encourage the parties, our PUC, our Planning Department that is charged with doing the additional SEQA analysis, and the Alameda County Water District, to try to work together collaboratively. I realize things are a little tense. Obviously, based on the decision that we made last week, the EIR will be recirculated. As I said on September 5, yeah, two weeks ago, whatever day it was, I am hopeful that the parties will go back to a collaborative relationship that they once enjoyed. I am troubled by some of the statements made by ACWD staff today, but to that end, colleagues, and I'm not interested, nor did I say that planning would enlist their help in obtaining the independent third party. If the independent third party is deemed to have not done a good job, if the EIR changes that Mr. Kern is working on are not sufficient, God forbid, you can appeal it again, and we will make that determination in our sole and absolute discretion pursuant to Chapter 31 of the Administrative Code. However, I would like to add on page four, at line 21, this is the "further moved," a little bit of language, which would have planning work with the Alameda Creek Fisheries Restoration Work Group. So it would read as follows, and it's before all of you colleagues. Further moved in conducting any such additional environmental analysis, the Planning Department shall enlist an independent third-party review of the groundwater, surface water model to determine if the current model adequately and accurately analyzes the fisheries issues as required by SEQA, and insert the following, and present the results of such review to the Alameda Creek Fisheries Restoration Work Group. And the rest remains. So I'd like to rise to make that one amendment, and again, encourage the parties to work collaboratively together. I mean, this is our PUC, this is our project. I would love for you to work with them collaboratively and in consultation with them. Things are not good right now, but I suggest that ACWD be a part of the solution.
Thank you, Supervisor Peskin. Supervisor Peskin has made a motion to amend. Is there a second? Seconded by Supervisor Fewer. Colleagues, can we take the amendment without objection? Without objection, the amendment passes unanimously. And on the item as amended, can we take that same house, same call? Without objection, the motion as amended is adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, please read the memoriam.
Madam President, there were none submitted.
Okay. This brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business before us?
That concludes our business for today.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.[1755.53][1755.53][music]